Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us today. It's the Thursday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Yeah, hold on here.
Is there a change?
There are some changes.
All right.
I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda, modified agenda, striking items eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, because Mr. Golden is not here today. And apparently, he wanted to be present to discuss those with the commission and executive session. And then also, I would ask as part of that motion, John Rombo has asked for inclusion of an emergency payment to be made at the highway shop. And Joe Mater from the state's attorney has asked for an emergency payment to be made to Legacy Aviation to be paid on September twenty-seventh. Is there a motion to that effect?
I also move.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion or questions?
Clarification.
Yes.
Acting Chair, for those items, are they under the regular business, are under consent for the emergency payments?
They are not on any of the agenda items at all.
But we're adding those emergency payments, is that under a regular business discussion item, or? I know the airport needs to be under regular business.
Yeah, I know what you're asking, would it be included on the consent agenda?
Yes.
If that's part of your motion.
No, I would like it to be on the, clarify that it is on the regular business.
Does Commissioner Gibbon want to clarify his motion with that?
Yes, I can do that.
What about the second?
I'll clarify.
Okay, any further discussion or questions with that clarification?
No, ma'am, or no, sir.
Okay, any other discussion, hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Got the consent agenda, does anybody have any issue with the consent agenda at all? Okay, if not, I'd ask for board action to approve consent agenda items.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion, hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Opportunity for public comment, if there are any citizens, residents, or anybody in the audience who would like to speak, now is the time and place. Linda, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I am here again today to talk, oh, I'm Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I am here again today to ask about the CVRs. Went to a hearing on Tuesday that the state's attorney was there. And this is my opinion and my understanding of what he said, I'm not a lawyer, so, but what the judge did say, that if there are CVRs, they are free for the people to look at. And I listened to Ms. Lund's, Auditor Lund's hearing, or meeting that she did, and she did say she has the thumb drive that has the CVRs on, and all the other information that we need that have been requested by we the people. I just want those CVRs, we've been asking for them, and I just ask your help, and that we get them so that we can move on. Auditor Lund did an excellent job saying that she believes that her election was perfect. And she believes that she, I had talked last week about having a follow-up post-election audit, and she said that that wouldn't be a problem for her. And I, I'm all for that. We need a post-election audit, in fact, in my humble opinion, we just got done having a primary. We would have this all taken care of if we would do a paper audit. You don't just run the ballots through the machine again, you do a paper audit. Those are my opinions, and I thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, Linda, is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, seen none, we'll move on from the opportunity for public comment, we'll move to Commissioner reports, are there any Commissioners who would like to speak?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to give a report that the County Association had their annual convention in Pierre, and that it was well-attended across the state. And I wanted to give a special shout-out to our Deputy State's Attorney, Bill Golden, who put on a presentation about unions, and talking about unions, pro and con. It was well-attended, and he did an excellent job, so I'd like to have that for the record.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioner Schmidt, any other Commissioners? Okay, what I would like to say is that recently, the news came out that the State Game and Fish, Game Fish and Parks Department has approved four point five million dollars for the construction of the spillway at Lake Elvin. So that spillway is a number of years old, and is in dire need of construction, and the State GFMP believes that will help increase water quality there as well, through a number of other improvements that are going to be made, not only to the spillway, but to water levels and things like that. So I want to thank the State GFMP, as well as the Gnome Administration, for making those monies available to improve a recreation area that's used by a lot of people in this county. Okay.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. What, did I read also that the Game Fish and Parks were going to not build that camping site where the golf course was?
Yes.
I know you had represented those individuals.
Yeah, so last week, I, or at the previous meeting, I had discussed that, and it appears that the State GFMP Commission has taken a dim view on the idea of putting a campground in somebody's backyard. There is no, a final decision will be made at the State GFMP meeting in December, but all indications are that the State GFMP has listened and heard to what the residents of the community, what their concerns are, and it appears they've taken those concerns into consideration, and, and things are looking good. And the citizens out there are still working with GFMP to make sure it doesn't happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd, I'd just like to report that part of Lincoln County Road one oh three will be closed west of Lenox, starting next week, for bridge construction. I know this is a joint effort between Lincoln County and the municipality of Lenox. It's going to be closed approximately eight weeks, we hope only eight weeks, so there will be, some modifications have to be made by some of the people living in that particular area, so this is nice that this is going to be redone, so just information.
And that's going to be closed for eight weeks, right?
Correct.
Yeah, well, plan your commute to Sioux Falls another way, right? Okay, anybody else? All right, hearing none, first issue of regular business is a second reading and a public hearing for, well, Sean, you, you want to read that?
Yes, sir, this is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits by amending ordinance twenty-one zero six dash three zero.
All right, Mr. Mater, are you standing instead of Mr. Golden this morning?
Yes.
Before we kick off the public hearing, is there any presentation that State's Attorney's Office want to make, wants to make, or any representations regarding the proposed ordinance?
Commissioner Aaron's, we do have a person on the telephone, too, when we get to that point.
Okay.
I would just say that the State's Attorney reviewed the proposed edits that were sent and included in your packet today. I believe there's a couple salient points that the edits did provide that I would say are proper, but otherwise, there were a couple edits that we would recommend rejection of for purposes of the ordinance, and the reason that we did propose that language in the first place. So unless the Commission has any questions about those specific edits, I would otherwise defer to the individual that's on the phone.
Sure, and I think the way we want to do this is, I'll ask, I'll have the Commissioners ask you about the edits after the inclusion of all public testimony.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Now is the time and place for the public hearing on this ordinance, are there any proponents who would like to speak to the ordinance? I assume, is it Ned Horsted on the phone? Okay, Ned's probably, I don't know if Ned's a proponent or opponent, I know he proposed a number of changes, but are there any other proponents? Okay, seen none, are there any opponents who would like to speak to the ordinance? Ned, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, hang on, I'm getting feedback here, let me switch over. Yeah, I apologize, I couldn't be there, I had a meeting with our consultant in another state, so I was rushing back, but unable to make it in the room today. I wouldn't say that I'm, you know, for or against this ordinance, I believe you probably have all read my comments, greatly appreciate what Lincoln County has done upfront, getting ahead of the ball, you know, when we started this. Rules had not been written, amendment A was still up in the air, so I think Lincoln County did a great job out of the gate, now being a business operator with rules in place and several other things. You know, I do have some concerns, which I redlined, which I redlined out, I'm not an attorney, however, there are some things that, you know, being heavily involved in the state rulemaking process with the Department of Health and the capacity, leading the industry association, and now as a licensed business owner in the county with three license types, had some concerns, so those are laid out, and, you know, I don't know that I need to step through them all if you haven't been writing, I would be curious just, you know, what was, what you agreed with me on, and then, you know, probably more importantly, you know, for locking horns on anything here, just understanding which items we're talking about, because I don't believe I saw a second draft, you know, yet, it may be posted, but if, if it was, I missed it.
Yeah, Ned, the way we're going to do this. The way we're going to do this, Ned, is you can make whatever comments you want right now, I'll have the State's Attorney's Office come up here and go through those redline changes, and then the Commissioners, as well as you, will know what the disagreement was. And since you've been an interested party, I'll just allow you to, you know, make a little comment if you want to, after you find out what the State's Attorney's disagreements were with your edits, okay? I think that's probably the fairest way to proceed. So do you have any other comment with regard to the ordinance?
No, I don't think so, you know, I was down there for three hours or more during the first reading, and, you know, did not realize that I had to make comments on a dream public comment, therefore, I was not able to make any of those comments last meeting, so those should all be in text. I think my main question last time would have been around, you know, the reason for the update, I imagine it's just, you know, making things right afterwards. The main difference that I saw was in background checks, and again, I hope I put this eloquently enough in the text there, I have no issue with background checks, you know, if you want us to get fingerprints, that's fine, as a business owner, my question is just process, so the way that the Department of Health has, has it set, basically, you get these background checks done, however they're done, NCIS, I think they issue, my understanding of the problem here is, background check has not been defined in state law or in state rule, so it's probably good to update that the way that the county has. I think my, my primary concern with that particular language is, you know, if we're going to hire an individual, we would need to send them to the county to get a background check, no issue with doing that, but then it's sending it back to the, the state, and then the state sends it back to you guys, and then, you know, do I call you and figure out when we can actually onboard an employee? I'm just hoping we can streamline this, so, you know, government's not in the way of us launching the business in the way that we need to. The other, there's another primary thing, you know, adding a class-two misdemeanor for possession of marijuana in a public place, vehemently disagree with that, I think, you know, if you're going to do something like that, you should at least acknowledge thirty-four twenty G, and that, you know, my opinion would be, I don't know that that can be done the way that the state law reads, so just from top of mind, as I'm in a vehicle traveling back here, those were two, two big items, but, you know, I kind of line item everything out, so I think that's all I have at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horsted, are there any other opponents who would like to speak to the ordinance? Okay, seen none, I'll close the testimony at this time, with the exception of allowing Mr. Horsted to get, maybe give a little rebuttal to the State's Attorney's Office, but if the State's Attorney would like to come up now, given the close of testimony, and outline to the Commissioners, what exactly are we voting on today?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, on page one, there's an edit to change the Department of Health to the Department of Revenue. The State's Attorney's Office would recommend acceptance of that edit, or I guess it was on page two when I looked at it. Also on page two, I believe, there's a recommendation of removal of the background check definition. At this point, the State's Attorney's Office would recommend denial of that edit, there's a reason for these background checks, and a good standing or good moral compass, I believe, is the definition, and these background checks, we believe, are beneficial in assessing that evaluation.
Hey, Mr. Mater, can I have you hold on for a second? I'm trying to pull this up in Board Sync on my computer right now, and I'm just, I'm getting the spinning wheel of death here.
So do I.
Yeah, so I think.
Oh, that would be why I'm not gonna.
Let's do this.
Let me see here, which one is going to be the edited document? He's got it.
How did you do that?
His terminal's working, but not the, not ours.
Jim, you got it?
No. I.
It's all of ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, when it does come up, it gives me a blank page.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a blank page.
Yeah, all of them.
It's a blank page, yeah.
Okay.
I am able to open it on the public side?
You are?
Yes, and there isn't anything attached to this that's, that's private, so we could access it from the public side on Lincoln County.
Now I'm getting that one.
Nothing, it just keeps spinning.
Huh. I was gonna say, if we want to, we could go through the, just the regular site, but might have to go.
See if I can do that.
Up here, that plus? Nope, that one. Okay, I'm gonna type something in here, okay?
Apologies to the audience.
Listening or in public, from the delay. Question there somewhere.
That's quite a process.
Well, I'm trying to figure out why I can access it and you guys can't.
It is visible up there.
Yeah, it is up on the screen there.
I should be able to get that, that should be.
Correct.
We'll just have to follow along with that.
Well, maybe, okay, yeah, here it is.
Okay, well.
Now my cursor is froze.
Yeah, because you're looking at his screen.
Okay. If you go through the regular.
Yeah, I'm. All right, Commissioners, so if you go through the regular website, LincolnCountySD.org, as opposed to going through the backend Commissioner website, you should be able to pull it up.
Yeah, it's all there.
So when everybody gets there, let me know, and then we'll move on.
We got notes on Joe's, I'll look at the screen.
Yeah, is everybody ready?
Jim, Jim?
Yeah.
Sounds up?
No, I'll look on.
We're good.
I'll just look on with Commissioner.
Otherwise, you can follow his board that's up.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing right now, following the board.
Okay, Mr. Mater, my apologies, why don't you just start from the top now that we've got it in front of us?
Thank you, on page two, I have it on the podium right now, that they recommended the removal of background checks, once again, we would recommend denial of that edit, the background checks are important to assess the various criteria that we've put into these rules and this ordinance. Also on page two, below that, there is a recommendation for, or I should start, the background checks was the second edit, the first edit was the change from the Department of Health to the Department of Revenue, that is fine with the State's Attorney's Office, we believe that matches the language that's been provided. Moving on to page four, I believe it is, that the definition of contractors should be changed from an individual termed as adults and defined as an eighteen-year-old instead of a twenty-one-year-old, the State's Attorney's Office would recommend acceptance of that change as well, I believe that matches the state's language and the obvious definition of a adult. Page five, there is a recommendation for the change in the length in which an individual needs to keep security footage. And I'm having trouble finding these now, but.
I think it's called comment number four, right?
There we go. Yep, the length of these video recordings has been defined by the state rules, and I believe that the Commission is well within its bounds to match that length in time, and the State's Attorney's Office would recommend acceptance of that edit. Moving on. There is a recommendation for the Commission to remove the rule that a business can only hold one license. At this point, the State's Attorney's Office would recommend that you deny that edit as, I think the purpose of the ordinance right now is to limit the amount of licenses as far as businesses go, so that it does not become a commodity as we've seen with, like, liquor license and things of that such. And the same thing as far as the removal of non-transferable licenses on the same page, I believe, both those edits, the office would recommend that you deny those. At this point, we believe it's proper for a business to have one license and to make those licenses non-transferable. The final recommendation, I believe, is that we remove entirely the residual section of this ordinance, the recommendation is to deny that removal, there is, as several individuals on this board know, residual sections of contracts or ordinances, just define certain things that cannot otherwise be present in other portions of the contract or ordinances, and that's the reason that it is included, even as the suggestion is that it's covered by South Dakota law, there's a reason that we include it in the residual section. South Dakota law, there's a reason that we include it in the residual section. As far as the individual on the phone today, I forget that individual's name, I apologize for not listening closer. As far as the class-two misdemeanor, I would recommend denial of that edit as well. It's important for our office and the community to have certain limitations in place for the transfer possession of these marijuana items, and the class-two misdemeanor fits, I believe, South Dakota law and the policy of this county.
Okay, I understand edit one, which is the DOH, that's a simple Scribner's error, I think. I understand number two, the background check. I understand number three, which is the contractor issue. I understand number four, which is expanding surveillance retention or video retention to 90 days. I've got some confusion about transferability, and not about necessarily about the concept itself, but about what the State's Attorney's Office feels is the reason, the harm or concern that it's attempting to remedy by striking transferability. Wondering if you could speak to that a little bit?
I believe that the transferability is an important section as far as the background, it goes back to the background checks and the application itself. I believe that to show in front of this commission and for the county as well, that in order to go through those processes, it's important to have the application, the background check, the fees that are included, obviously, to show your purpose and the business goals. Once again, I believe the comparison to liquor licenses is somewhat apt, that we're trying to stop this license from becoming a commodity in and of itself and becoming a item of worth. We believe that the license should be, in and of itself, just the opportunity to conduct business in the county.
Yeah, and just so I understa-, I think I got it now, and there was a concern posited that if somebody wanted to, somebody wanted to come in from the outside and purchase pre-existing medical cannabis facility, this provision would not stop a merger and acquisition from occurring. It would simply require that entity to reapply for the license.
I believe that's-
Before the sale can go through, correct?
It's a perfect example there, Commissioner, that it would just be the same process of application essentially, and the merger and acquisition wouldn't be an issue, it's the application in and of itself that would be taking place.
Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to clarify is the class-two misdemeanor.
Yes.
I want to have a little, well, I'm sure a lot of commissioners will have questions or comments, but just so I can understand the State's Attorney's position on the inclusion of a new criminal ordinance, I guess I've got a couple questions for you, Joe. Number one, is the inclusion of a new class-two misdemeanor, are there any other counties doing that? Or number, that's my first question. My second question is, is that some kind of guidance issued by the Department of Health or Department of Revenue regarding this? I'm just wondering, no offense, but I want to make sure that this isn't an opportunity being used to create a whole new criminal code, as opposed to just regulating medical cannabis facilities. So I just want to get your take on that.
Thank you for the question. As far as other counties, I think I'm unable to answer that question, to be honest. I don't know precisely how their ordinances are being worded and their criminal code associated with that. As far as the second part of that question, I would say it is not an opportunity for us to create a whole new criminal act. I believe it matches pretty precisely what the possession of marijuana language is already included in South Dakota codified laws, and it's simply a provision in order for people to have some sort of guidance as far as the possession and use of these marijuana items.
Can you give me an, you know, we always talk about these laws, but then nobody understands how they get applied, right? Can you give me an example of how and why a class-two misdemeanor regarding that is needed, specifically with regard to getting rolled up into the medical cannabis regulation?
I don't know if I can give a precise example, but I guess the comparison is somewhat to having a speeding ordinance for a city and under state law, I guess. There are speeding ordinances for both sections, it's not that both are gonna be charged out necessarily, but it's to make sure that both ends are covered. And I guess that's the best comparison that I can make, that we just make sure that we have a criminal code for the ordinance, and yes, it also is in state code, so either could be enforced.
Is it redundant, though? Do we already have a state law that already covers this?
I believe that's the Commissioner's goal today, to decide that, so I guess I can't answer that question necessarily.
Well, you know, we do have, do we have a state law that covers this issue?
I would answer that question in the affirmative.
Okay, so this would be, it's up to the commissioners to decide if they want to make a redundant law.
I would propose that this is not considered redundant, but that is obviously the purpose of this hearing today.
No, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your candor, because what I'm trying to get at is, is there, is there a concern or a harm that perhaps state law doesn't cover that we're not thinking of up here, that you all have a concern about from a law enforcement perspective for a situation that may occur at a cannabis dispensary? I mean, for example, is this an attempt to regulate an employee who may not have a medical condition, who wants to go out into the parking lot, smoke a joint? Well, is that the reason for having to bootstrap on the class-two misdemeanor? Or do, would the state law already cover that kind of conduct? Because obviously, we don't, we don't want people using drugs who work at these facilities if they're not entitled to use them, because it's all about effective delivery of medicine. So that's what I'm getting at, and I want to, I really, I really want to know what the State's Attorney's take is on that.
Yeah, I guess I would just answer that, and the fact that if an individual, like your example, isn't able to provide a medical license or doctor's order, that he would be guilty of a class-two misdemeanor of possession of marijuana or the class-one under statutory law. So I guess it's, either would cover that. So I don't know if I answered your question, Mr. Commissioner, but-
I'm really trying to narrow it down here, because what I'm thinking about is, well, what about the employee who brings it to his vehicle for otherwise valid transportation reasons? And I'm thinking, well, we've already got an ingestion crime, that already covers it. If, let's say the employee, he's legal coming out of the premises, he needs to go drive it across town to another dispensary, or however they transport this stuff legally. He's legal, he's legal, but it's the point at which he says, well, maybe I want to imbibe a little bit on this. Well, then that's the illegal part, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. Does the state law already cover it when he converts his conduct into the illegal act? And that's, you see where I'm going with, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I believe the state law would cover that situation.
Okay, and then were there any other changes after that you wanted to discuss?
I believe, other than the entire residual section being recommended to be removed, otherwise we've covered everything, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, Ned, I told you I'd give you a bite at the apple, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think part of the issue here is that I wasn't able to verbalize this during the last commission meeting. You know, we probably could have handled a lot of this, like, um-
Well, I'll interrupt you there, I'll interrupt you there, Ned. It was just a first reading, so there is no public comment. Today is, today is the first, today is the first and only opportunity for public comment, so you don't need to apologize. Just go ahead and give us your comments.
Yeah, I guess, let me step through. So, security footage, I would be curious what the, and I don't know if anyone actually read, you know, what the industry association and the security company put forth to the Department of Health on this rule. Currently, they're at 90 days, you know, we're pushing them on, or talking with them about bringing that down further. Like, we're gonna know very quickly if something bad happens in the facility, and it's ultimately a cost issue. It is, you know, if you have cloud storage, you're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars. This is high-definition video that must be retained for over half of a year. You know, we've got, I don't remember, I think Melissa's there, I don't remember how many cameras we have, just off the top of my head, but every room, every square inch of that place basically is under surveillance, so storing that footage is an extreme burden for cost on business. If the Department of Health says 90 days is all right, you know, I don't know why you would need to go beyond that, particularly where, you know, the security company, SMP, pointed out that, you know, the more that someone spends on the storage of footage, probably the less that they're gonna spend on cameras. I'm not necessarily worried about that, we've got our cameras there, but storage of high-def footage, like, I don't think that that's being taken into account by the State's Attorney's Office there. In terms of one license for business, understand where you're coming from there, and I think the liquor law comparison isn't necessarily all that useful in this, and I just want to make sure that reading it is how it would actually go, because otherwise, we're preventing business owners in the county from building equity in their business if they're able to transfer it. I, I, I don't know what else to say on that, I guess. On the, the marijuana in public, so this is a thing, you know, last meeting, and I don't know if it's on the agenda again, but there's been a lot of conversation in Lincoln County about building a jail, and a lot of consternation about that by voters and everyone else. Adding additional criminal penalties that don't need to be there seems like an overstep, and I, I just, you know, if I was there, I've got a medical card, if I held up a vape pen in my hand when I was in that room with you all right now, if I did that, would I be under arrest? Or would I be liable for arrest? Like, patients have medicine, you know, if they have gummies, they're gonna come with, you know, Ziploc-type thing, if they have that on their person and they're in the park in Canton or anywhere else in the county, you know, being able to arrest that individual for having medicine on them, I, I just can't wrap my mind around that, especially in light of, you know, the jail situation we've been talking about for several years in Lincoln County. The, the contractor issue, I can't remember, was that agreed to or, or not? I don't want to have to background check every midco employee and, you know, construction person that comes and changes air filters, things like that. Where did we land on that?
Uh, the, the State's Attorney's Office agreed that, uh-
Okay.
They struck that language.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the, you know, if we're, if we're concerned about, you know, limiting licenses by one business owner, you know, why don't we, I'd be fine with you tapping them with the medical establishments there, you know, in the county currently as a business owner, frankly. If you can't transfer them, I don't, I don't know what the downside is for that, but I think that's about all I have, and again, I apologize that I wasn't better prepared, just given the circumstances here, but appreciate the discussion.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna backtrack on what I said, Ned. The language regarding background checks was struck from the definitions, but in Section Two, Sub Four, under places of operation, I don't know, is, is that what the State's Attorney's Off, maybe the State's Attorney's Office can speak to this issue of Ned's concern about, every time you bring a contractor in to fix your building on a medical cannabis facility, do you have to do a background check on them? Is there any legitimacy to that concern under the State's Attorney's proposed edits?
No, I believe the background checks are meant for individuals that will be harvesting or controlling the marijuana of itself or working the facility. Changing an air filter, I guess I don't think would fall under that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, these people are gonna put some money into their buildings, they'll probably need plumbers and HVAC people to come and fix them. So just want to make sure that is not the legislative intent of the bill.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the close of public testimony, that's the close of, of that. I know you wanted to come and speak, but I, Ned has covered it for you. I did close the testimony, unless the other commissioners want to hear from any opponents, but bearing that, what I want to do now is open the floor for commissioners who have any questions for staff or proponents or opponents.
Joe, can you define to those that might be listening today or here today, when we say denial of a class-two misdemeanor? What, what does that mean?
Mr. Commissioner, are you asking what the maximum punishment under law would be for a class-two misdemeanor?
Yes.
It is 30 days in jail and a $500 fine, I believe, is the maximum?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, we have to, what I'm understanding is that we are enforcing the background checks, correct? And not deleting them?
Well, I think that is the question here. What I heard Mr. Mater say just now is that he belie-, State's Attorney's Office believes that this ordinance does not apply to, like, your HVAC guy or the plumber or other ancillary services being provided to these medical cannabis people. The background checks would only apply to, as I understand it, those people who are selling and harvesting.
Correct.
But I think that's what we want to get some clarity on, and maybe the way to answer Commissioner Schmidt's question is, Mr. Mater, could you point to the specific language in here? Just give us the line and section, read it to us, so everybody can make sure we're not gonna background check the plumber when they come to fix the plumbing at the medical cannabis building.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Under Section One, Sub Two, Ned, I believe, is the individual on the phone, or some of his coworkers have supplied the commission with a suggestion to remove that. It says background check would be defined as a criminal background investigation by means of a fingerprint check by the Division of Criminal Investigation pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 3420G61. A completed fingerprint card shall be submitted to Lincoln County Sheriff's Office or other South Dakota law enforcement agency. Upon completion of the criminal background investigation, the DCI shall forward the county all information obtained as a result of the criminal background investigation. Once again, I guess I would say that it is not in the intention of the State's Attorney's Office to learn of every individual into the future that a business could ever talk to. It's meant to review the background of individuals that the business has already identified as individuals that are going to be a part of the business plan or the workings of the actual day-to-day operations.
I agree with you, and I believe you, but we have elections in this country, and sometimes officials change, and I, I completely believe that this State's Attorney does not have that intention, but future State's Attorneys could, or a different State's Attorney could. And so I think, from my point of view, what I want to make sure of is not trying to ascertain what the intention of the State's Attorney's Office is, but what the actual language of the bill allows. And so I'm going to oppose- And so, I'm going to oppose any language that allows background checks on ancillary service providers. I, I don't need a background check for a plumber when they come to the medical cannabis facility, and so, I legitimately believe that is the State's Attorney's intention, but, um, State's Attorneys come and go, and it could change, or maybe somebody gets in a snit with the State's Attorney's Office and bam, well, we're gonna enforce it and we're gonna make life difficult for the medical cannabis people. So, I'd rather just have a provision in here that just strikes that ability, uh, the government not having the ability to, to even do that in the first place. And it also sets a precedent if we pass this as well, 'cause then other counties are gonna come and look at this, and they, and they'll say, "Well, Lincoln County said you can background, uh, background a plumber, but, uh, um, has a domino effect in this state for some reason." So, um, I guess that would be my concern, but Commissioner Schmidt, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
It does. I, I, I agree with your limitations as to where a background check is needed, and you've articulated, uh, fairly well. The idea in my mind is you just, for those that are actively using or dispensing of this commodity, and for anybody else, no. So, it, is this a semantic thing that we need to just, uh, reword, rewrite, uh, so that is spelled out more specifically? Are we at, are we at liberty to do that today?
Yes, Commissioner, we can.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think we're in can, uh, at least in my standpoint, I support the other recommendations from the State's Attorney with, uh, adding some clarity as to what we've just discussed. With that, I would like us to table, uh, this until our next meeting, allowing the State's Attorney's Office maybe to come up with that language that will clarify that a little bit better, and then we could take action, I believe, at that time.
Yeah.
So, my motion is to table.
And here's what I'm gonna do, Commissioner Poppins, I'm gonna hold your motion in abeyance for a moment. Is there any other, 'cause I've got some other things, is there any other commissioner who would like to make comments or questions to flush this thing out, so that when we do table this, the State's Attorney's Office, the public, the stakeholders, they all know why we're delaying this? So, anybody else got anything they wanna say?
Joe, you made mention that the, a business can only hold one license, and that the State's Attorney denies that? Is, is that correct? Did I have that?
Yes, at this point, I believe the language is to have, uh, each individual business hold one license.
And, and the reasoning?
That's the existing language that we currently have.
Okay, alright.
That's just a, not make a change to it, if they're, they're supporting not changing that, is that all right, Joe?
Thank you.
Yes.
The other part, just for clarification, we're recommending the saving of video up to ninety days. Was that onerous, uh, on, on Nate, on your part?
That's a request from, uh, Ned, or, uh,
Yeah.
To change it down to ninety days.
Not, to, to change it down to ninety days. So, we have consensus pretty much on that, right?
I thought there was consensus on that, because the original ordinance said one-eighty, and I heard Ned say he doesn't wanna do it for six months, I guess I don't blame him.
So, ninety days is fine, yeah.
I think that's a compromise. Um, I don't, you know, I don't really have any heartburn with, uh, what the State's Attorney outlined here, with the exception of the, the Class II meaner, misdemeanor issue. It's not that I want these, it's not that, um, I've got some objection to the county passing an ordinance with regard to the use of marijuana in a public place, um, it's that I think state law already covers it, number one, and I think, number two, it's inaprop, it's, I shouldn't say inappropriate, I should say, I don't wanna have that discussion intermixed with the regulation of a medical cannabis facility. I understand that the two issues are interconnected. There may be a concern that somebody is, you know, illegally or inappropriately using medical cannabis in front of the building. I get all of those concerns and how that may come into play, but, um, just like when we regulate, we pass rules for a liquor license, we don't simultaneously pass an ordinance against DUI. That's something that we leave to the state legislature to figure out for the most part, although we probably could pass a county ordinance if we wanted to regarding some of those issues. But typically, we separate out the criminal code from the administrative slash regulatory, and what I view this discussion as is more in the nature of regulating, um, the business aspect of this, as opposed to getting into the, the harms, consequences, and benefits of regulating other, uh, alleged or inappropriate illegal conduct. And I think those are two different discussions. I thank the State's Attorney for bringing that forward, flagging it for us, but I think that's another discussion for another day, possibly for another public hearing. So, I would support, uh, all of the compromise changes in here, with the exception of inclusion of the Class II misdemeanor. And then, before we take a vote on this motion, the other thing I do wanna say is that with regard to transferability, I remember my own comments with regard to supporting medical cannabis. Uh, we, I specifically stated, and I think there may have been others on this commission as well, who did make very specific comments stating that they did not want medical cannabis licenses to become a commodity or to become regulated in the same way that we regulate, uh, liquor licenses. I mean, in fact, I think there's a burgeoning argument being made in this state, um, it may not have majority support, but I think there's a burgeoning argument being made that liquor licenses and beer licenses should not, or, excuse me, a liquor license should no longer be treated like a commodity either. Uh, I don't think that argument is ripe yet, but I know it's out there. I, I know it's bubbling up to the surface, but today, what's in front of us is whether a medical cannabis license should become a commodity, and we're trying to, pardon the pun, nip this thing in the bud. And we don't wanna commoditize this process right from the get-go. I understand Mr. Horsted's concerns about, um, affecting the value of his business, but his business, when he gets ready to sell it, if he ever does, will still have the same value if the potential buyer is able to pass all the background checks and be able to get the license. So, I don't consider that to be a, uh, a, a harmful commercial barrier. So, with that, if any other commissioners have any comments, that's fine, but, uh, we've got a motion on the table right now, or, excuse me, a motion here to table this. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and second? Any discussion, hearing? Yes.
The point for the tabling is, is there's the one area that needs language clarification, um, otherwise, we could pick and choose today, but I believe that's the one that needs to maybe have some clarity, uh, provided, um, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, under, I, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner. Um, got a motion and second? Any discussion, hearing none? Clerk call the roll.
Uh, first, if I could have some clarification, the, the motion is to table until nine-twenty-seven for language clarification as discussed at today's hearing.
Correct.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, item number two. Got a notice of a raffle. I don't think we need to take any action on that, do we? Okay, let's move on. Uh, Mr. Floyd, uh, per the process for townships to apply for the RAIF program?
Was this yours or not?
I guess it is.
There you go.
Good morning. Uh, so, uh, what we have before you, um, uh, we had a meeting after the last me, uh, after the last commission meeting, uh, with the, uh, with the, I guess it's gonna be called the Application Review Committee or Board, whatever you wanna call it, um, to go over, um, some of the, 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 the processes that we're gonna follow, um, when it comes to rural access infrastructure funding, uh, when it comes to the granting. Again, the process, uh, it should be within your, in your folders, uh, for review, hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. Um, these are the, some of the things. So, when grant applications come in, you know, they'll be brought before this, this committee to review, and then this is the process that we're gonna follow, um, in awarding those grants. So, basically, that committee's gonna make recommendations to the full board, um, as far as what to award and what, what doesn't not, what does not get awarded. So, um, also a part of this, uh, is a reimbursement form, um, that, uh, that we've created, uh, so when, uh, when townships get going on this, um, to get, uh, reimbursed for, for the money that they've been awarded, so. Um, any, any questions on the process as you've read it?
And this is the eighty-twenty, correct? Eighty percent, twenty percent? Is that correct, or?
Yes, yeah, so, so, I, I guess, I, I, maybe I should, maybe I should start over, but, are you all familiar with the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund that was created, um, a state legislator created it through HB twelve-fifty-nine, um, in the last legislative session? Um, basically, this is funding, uh, for townships, uh, with small structures, basically anything over sixteen square foot. So, again, this is gonna be a grant process. Inventory was, was, was done, um, we have a process now where we have the application form, we have a five-year plan that the townships need to do. So, and this, a lot of this information came down from the, uh, State Department of Transportation. I will say, you know, we had, uh, the, the deadline for the five-year plan for townships to submit five-year plans was August thirty-first, um, and we had eight out of sixteen townships get five-year plans in. Um, so I'll be, I'm in the process of, uh, reviewing those, uh, five-year plans to make sure everything on there is eligible, uh, to make sure all the documents are there. So, so the next process on this is gonna be, um, the grant applications, what's gonna be due, uh, October thirty-first, and again, it's from that point forward that this, this RAVE process that we're, we're looking to approve, um, will be used. Once you guys approve this, we will put it out on our website, we'll notify the townships, um, that this is, the process which will be following. I will say that, that there is, uh, I think there's several other counties, um, out of county convention, that we had discussion with other superintendents. There is, there is maybe a little bit of traction to, um, somebody create a process that would award points, uh, for structures, so it takes a little more of the, maybe, um, personal feelings or thoughts or whatever out of, out of, out of awarding, but, again, I, I don't know where they are with that, I, you know, I've been sitting in on a few of those meetings, but, um, I guess my, my feeling is that for this year, we'll adopt this this year, and if we wanna do the point system, then we'll just amend our process for next year, um, and then we'll, we'll adopt that for next year if we wanna do that.
Terry, I, I understand, we had discussions on that as well. A point system sounds, uh, as a solution, but it becomes very difficult, very, very difficult. What separates, if you're on a five-point system or, uh, whatever, what separates one point from another? And I, I think still the merits of the, of the application are, are what the key to it is. And you can see the long-range effects, you can see how many people that, uh, you know, that it goes on, so. I don't know that I'm really excited about it. Point system, as opposed to the merits of what that is gonna do for the particular township.
I mean, they do, you know, if you read state law, they do have, uh, the criteria laid out for which to, which to judge them on.
Yeah.
You know, for you, so, um, and I, you know, as far, you know, I guess I didn't wanna go with the point system initially, because I think there's a lot more work that we would have to do on our end, on the business side of that, um, creating documents, uh, because they're looking at, the point system they're looking at doing is, is gonna be loosely based on what the DOT does for the bridge improvement granting process, um, so there's gonna be a lot of different criteria in there.
And that may happen at some point in time.
Yeah, and I think, I think a few counties will, will be adopting, and I know many, Ha-Ha County is the one driving the, uh, the point system process, so, but, any other questions on this?
And just for clarification, eighty percent of the cost is the county and twenty percent the township, correct?
Yes, but I, I, I'm gonna say it's not county cost. The, the monies, the state has designated money and sent that down to us already, so it's DOT funds.
Okay.
Um, that will be spent, not county funds.
Okay.
The only funding that the county or the money, monies that the counties are gonna have to, uh, expense on this is gonna be, uh, time for oversight on this, on this program.
Okay.
We get to spend some money the state gave us.
The money that the state gives us, is that segregated off and that can't be, that's not put into the general fund?
Correct.
Yep, there was a two-ninety fund, or two-ninety-five fund that was set up for it, and the payments will come directly out of there, so it's not any part of the general fund at all.
Do you know how much we received?
I do. Five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents.
Townships, get your projects in.
Yes, so, again, uh, like I said, we've been trying to work with them, uh, you know, I, I know that some of this information that come down from the DOT, um, it can be a little difficult, you know, uh, so it's, it's a little techie, um, so, but we've been working with them, trying to, to encourage them to get going on that, and, and again, the grant process is gonna be the same thing. Um, I know one of the townships had submitted a grant application, um, with, with their five-year plan for a project already, so.
Terry, do you have a list there of who, what townships submitted?
I do not have it with me.
Oh, okay.
If I, I can probably rattle them off, uh, from memory, but I would hate to get one wrong.
Well, I'm not gonna ask you to do that then, but if you had a list there, I wasn't gonna ask you to rattle it off.
But only fifty percent participated, correct?
Yes, yeah, and, and I know an email went around last week, um, uh, asking, uh, counties how many townships, uh, they had applied, um, and I will say that we're probably in the upper part of the group, uh, as far as percentage of townships that, that have applied. I know there is many, many counties where they had zero, so.
I talked with their executive director for townships, who was at, who was at the convention, and she was going to, uh, really do an extra push on encouraging and cajoling and contacting all the necessary individuals to, to really participate in this thing, so.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Terry Slatton as well, uh, and I, and I could told her, I said, "I think one of the things, they have their towns and townships, their meeting coming up,"
Yep.
"or their convention coming up in December," and I told her, I said, "You know, it'd be great if you guys had a session on going over this process and how to do that, how to fill out that five-year plan process, how to fill out the grant process," you know, because that's the biggest thing that a lot of these townships are struggling with, you know? The document we got from the DOT is an Excel, an Excel file, you know, and, um, it's really busy when you look at it, but it, it's set up really well, um, and, and I think one of the things that townships are having an issue with is they may not, may not have a compatible Excel program, yes, while it might not be up to date, might not be, you know, macros and all this, it's, this is IT stuff, I, I don't really understand it either, but, um, so.
Well, they probably need somebody to just educate them and, uh, give them a class on how to do it.
Correct. And I believe, I, I believe we had one township, um, they couldn't get it to work, um, so they end up printing off the forms and, and submitted a written application, their, or their five-year plan, uh, which is fine, I mean, we can, we can try to work with them, hopefully they can get it next year, so.
Are there any other questions, uh, for Terry or Sherry? I'll entertain a motion, uh, if there is nothing further.
So moved, man, Mr. Chair. I'll second.
Got a motion and second to, uh, approve the process for townships to apply for RAIF funds. Uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Board action to approve the amendments of the twenty-twenty federal bridge grants agreements, Terry?
All right, the next item I have on here, um, so, uh, back in twenty-twenty, we approved, there was a federal federal money that came down to the DOT. And the DOT did a federal grant program through the DOT with federal funding. We, at that time, if you recall, I think I've spoke about this several other times, but we are awarded four structures for placement under this. So we had agreements signed. Well, the agreements come back. I know last year legislative session, they ended up, the state ended up delegating or appropriating money to help with the, the local cost share on this. So initially, these agreements were set up to have a, our share was going to be eighteen point zero five percent. And that, with these amendments, basically what it's going to do for each one of these structures is it's lowering that from eighteen point zero five percent to five point three four percent is going to be the local cost share. The state had, like I said, they had set aside funds to cover, and ended up covering twelve point seven one percent of our cost share on that. So basically, that's what these amendments are doing, is lowering the cost, lowering our cost share on this. So.
Any, any further questions for Terry? I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Board action to approve the abatement, Sioux Falls. Carla Gosin.
Good morning, Commission. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. I would like to recommend to abate property taxes for 2019 pay 2020 requested by Lifestyle Investments and Corp-, or LLC in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. The legal description is Lot 5, Block 2, Grand Arbor Village Edition, parcel number 281 dot 57 dot 02 dot 005. This parcel was replatted in 2018. Therefore, it should have been deleted off the assessment roll for the 2019 pay 20 assessment year, but was not deleted.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gosin. Jake, authorized chair to execute an agreement, Schneider Geospatial.
Good morning. I'm here to get an agreement signed by the chair for a public or property information portal for the public to use. It'll collect all of our information that we have here. And based on a little fee, it will display all the information we have on our properties. It's something that we've kind of been always working up to and been asked for. So we're just ready to sign an agreement and get that done.
Anybody have any questions for Jake? I will say this, Jake, your email that you sent out pretty much explained what's going to happen. And then, just so the public understands, could you maybe explain to the commission how the cost recovery feature is going to work?
Yeah. So our idea is to come up with a tiered system. We have a, like a day pass, a weekly pass, a monthly pass, an annual pass. And through there, they can view unlimited parcels. And that's what we would use as a mechanism to recoup our costs for the annual fees that we have with this service. We did the month, we did the tiered plan because we wanted to allow anybody who just wants to view their parcel or even find comparables for maybe an abatement type of situation. Then they can just pay five dollars and then look at all the properties they could ever want to match their own home, things like that.
And this is currently a function that's not offered, right?
Correct.
So, you know, speaking from a homeowner's point of view, but also from an attorney who looks into properties a lot, it's nice to be able to do this from your office.
Yes.
So you don't, you know, I call around to a lot of courthouses, and I'll tell you, a lot of courthouses have a lot of different policies on this.
Yeah.
And it's nice to just go to the internet and access this information. And just so the public knows, you know, these people don't offer this service for free, and the county's not all flush with money. So it is a service that's got to be paid for.
Correct. There will be parts of it that will be available, and then there'll be parts that you'd have to pay to get it.
Okay.
It's kind, the idea is to get to a one-stop-shop portal for people to view their property information.
I think it's a great addition. Great. I'd move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second to approve the, executing the agreement. Is there any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Jake. First reading of an ordinance. Sean, do you want to read that for us?
This is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, zoning a portion approximately 2.4 acres of the property legally described as Track 3, Popping Gis Edition, Southwest Quarter, Section 28, Township 99 North, Right 51 West, Perry Township, from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Location is 46622278th Street.
Okay. I don't, I don't see any of the relevant staff members in here. So I guess, unless somebody's got any questions, you can either do it now or after the meeting, I guess. We'll move on. Agenda item eight, Board action regarding the airport CIP meeting in Mitchell.
I guess the best way to phrase this is that it was brought to our attention that there's going to be a meeting in Mitchell, South Dakota regarding several county airports or local airports. There is an issue regarding the FAA deciding to no longer fund certain projects that are of concern. The board action today is to either recommend or appoint someone to possibly attend that meeting.
Is your recommendation to appoint a commissioner? Or was this something that Mr. Golden wanted to participate in?
Mr. Golden or myself would be more than happy to attend. Otherwise, I believe also a commissioner, possibly one from the Airport Committee could also attend.
Sure. Commissioners, any guidance here?
I'm just going to be quiet.
Are you, Commissioner?
We attended, I think Commissioner Poppins and I attended that one, one time.
Commissioner Poppins, are you being?
I'm glad to. Remind me the date on it, though. Joe, do you remember?
October 3rd.
What day is it?
October 3rd.
October 3rd.
Okay. You've just been voluntold.
Yeah, I figured that was coming.
All right. So motion to appoint Commissioner Poppins to that committee. And then if any relevance staff from other entities want to go, that's fine. Is there a motion of that effect?
Also move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins votes yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Poppins.
If you recall, Commissioner, you got a great dinner.
Yes.
You're, put your reimbursement form in with the auditor afterwards. Okay. Board action, or excuse me, board discussion regarding remaining use of ARPA funds. Commissioner Poppins, you're in the barrel.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would like to have just a brief conversation to, I think, more give guidance to those entities out there that are wondering what we're going to be potentially doing with our funding that we have in excess. Granted, a large part of that has gone into our general operating fund. There is a small remainder that may or may not be for other projects. What I would like to see that is if we do go to dispersing those funds to other entities, we can, we were, we have been approached with one entity that is looking for funds so they can match other grant money to do projects. I think we should try to focus on projects that are build-ready, as, as the catchphrase is, but also that could double or do expand the amount of funding that's available. So I think that if we made that a preliminary policy, and again, I'm not looking for any action today. I'm just looking for open discussion to see if there's other aspects that people thought, think that would be important if people do start to approach us further for looking for funds. I know that the city of Kent, although it didn't have to be ARPA funds, were looking for money. But I would like us to encourage only applicants that have a ability to find matching funds for their project so that we can expand the amount of resources available. So that's, that's my only point today, other than hoping others have interest in sharing what they think would be important if we distributed the funds to other entities.
I, I think it's a relevant conversation. Thanks for bringing it up. We have been approached both individually, as individuals, as well as a commission by a number of entities seeking public money. Public money is in short supply these days at the state and local level, or at least at the local level, I should say. And there's a lot of projects out there. There's a lot of critical projects. There's a lot of things people in these different municipalities and counties want to work on. I completely understand that. At the same time, we can't fund everything. So we've got to figure out either a policy or a methodology by which we would consider some of these projects. From my point of view, Commissioner, and I think I've told you this privately, or I've told others, I think the ARPA money ought to be used for courthouse expansion. It's one-time money, and it should be used on one-time projects. And this money was given to the county. I did go back and read the Biden Treasury Final Regulation that was issued back in April. And it was interesting to note how we got this money. It said it was for reimbursement of lost revenue. And I'm thinking to myself, county didn't lose any revenue because of COVID. We get all of our revenue from county property taxes. I don't think property valuations went down during COVID. And in fact, it may have gone up. And so, and as for the other COVID protections that we had to do with regard to mask and, and putting glass in the different window, service windows here, all that stuff was reimbursed by the state of South Dakota. So we haven't lost one dime because of COVID. So, and the reason I say that is, the reason I want to take an opportunity to say that is, is number one, it's because it was because of this Treasury regulation that allowed greater increased flexibility to use these federal funds. And it was really a sidestep around Congress because Congress was dragging their feet and did, because the National Association of Counties, Commissioner Schmidt, wanted a law passed by the Congress, if I'm correct, allowing infrastructure projects to be funded. And they couldn't get any action. So the Biden administration issued an administrative change to the, to the implementation of the federal law. And the county was allowed to basically, basically take a standard deduction or standard exemption, allowing us $10 million. So we've got ten, we've got 10 million unconstrained dollars sitting in our bank account right now, one-time monies. I would hope we use them on one-time projects. My position, Commissioner Poppins, is I, I understand the importance of these other entities out there, but this county is fiscally constrained like nobody's business. And I think we ought to use that money on county business.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would concur with your feelings on that. I just want to mention that when the law was written, it goes to show you that so many counties receive sales tax as their ability to balance their budget. And we're a county that lives and dies on property taxes. So when they put down that they were to regroup the losses that they had, they were thinking of those counties that live on sales tax and had reduced sales during COVID. And they lost a ton of money because there wasn't much activity. But you're right, NACO wanted that to be much more liberal in its interpretation, where counties, and especially used for capital expenditures and not necessarily just to be put in your general fund. So ergo, what you mentioned, we have $10 million sitting there. And I would concur with the budget restraints that we have and the needs that we face. That money should be dedicated to our jail or our courtroom expansion, which is necessary. So my take.
Commissioner, Commissioner Poppins and Commissioner Aaronz, you make both very good statements. I think that obviously funds could be used for either one or both. It's kind of a balancing act. And, you know, I guess originally, I know we looked at it, that it was for water and sewer and broadband and so forth. And, you know, these are all things, if we help municipalities, municipality grows and our county grows, and we all benefit too. So anyway, good points brought out even by Commissioner Schmidt as well.
Just for clarification, there would be slightly additional funds over the 10 million that have been put into our general budget. I think this is specifically to address how those funds may be used if the county cannot find a mechanism to use for our own projects. So it's just to give guidance to the general or other entities and so that people will know whether or not they should qualify or should apply or ask for funding. I think the commitment was 10 million is put into our general fund. It's an adjustment into our operations currently and can be used for any services that the county finds in their budget. But Madam Auditor, remind myself as to what additional funds there might be above those 10 million.
It's a million something.
The $10 million was allocated for wage reimbursement. So they, that, all that does is frees up the local funds. So we got to quit saying that they're, they're unavailable. We've freed up local funds.
Yeah, I understand.
But I know, I'm just.
Okay, please.
But the 1.8 million, 889,000 dollars is what we have above the 10 million.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I want to get some clarification on this, Madam Auditor. I know that some have said that we took it for wage reimbursement. But the way that I read the Treasury regulation is we were allowed to take $10 million. We could, we had two ways to do it. We could either go, you know, submit every single little receipt for every loss of income, which frankly, wouldn't have been very much. Or we were allowed to take the standard $10 million allowed under the rule. Now, I know that some here at the county have said it's for quote unquote wage reimbursement. But we technically took those monies under the law as pursuant to the lost, the lost revenue provision of the regulation, right?
The resolution that you made was to use the lost revenue calculation or the standard deduction. So we took the standard deduction. And the resolution also states that the money would be used for wage reimbursement, which in turn then would free up the local dollars that we already had budgeted for wages. So yes, it's a little bit more complicated. We are stating it's for wage reimbursement. So we are not going back and saying, oh, but we're going to use it for courthouse expansion, because then we'll have to do federal procurement on it. So we're using it for wages.
Correct. And I think we're, you and I are getting much closer here with regard to this issue, is because there's been some discussion, I just want to clear this up. Some folks out there in the ether have said that this is committed, committed towards wage reimbursement, or excuse me, paying for increase or wages in the future. Now, that is a possibility. That's a possibility. But that is not a commitment that we've made. Basically, what we did is we took that money under the federal rule, and then we said it was going to reimburse wages that we've already paid, not wages that may occur in the future. Now, this commission may take a subsequent vote, and it may say, I want to subsidize our budget for next year using those funds for wages, right?
No, because you said that you are electing, in the resolution, you said you are electing to use the salaries and county-paid wages or county-paid benefits from the general fund as an expense for the American Rescue Plan in the amount of up to $10 million.
Okay. So it's a substitution reimbursement for expenses that already occurred and not moving forward?
Correct.
So it's a rearview mirror approach?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Okay, good. So that means that now that that substitution has taken place, this commission can choose how to use that money however it wants to, correct?
The $10 million of local money that it freed up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But we can't use ARPA funds and use it as we want to in the same sentence.
I'm going to talk about that next.
Okay.
Commissioner Poppins and yourself bring up a good point. We took this, we took the $10 million. We did that. It's all appropriate. It's all legal. I get that. But there is still approximately, what is it, one, two, 1. something?
Just under 2 million, yeah.
There's just under $2 million in ARPA funds that that are still available for this county's discretionary use. But we got to follow these really onerous federal laws with regard to how that money gets spent. You know, for example, if we use that on an infrastructure project, if we or some other entity we grant that money to, they have to, they have to pay Davis Bacon wages, which basically is, you know, the biggest, you got to go union, you can't use your local contractor, and you got to pay Davis Bacon. It's going to basically increase the price of the project. And that was basically because when the Biden administration passed this thing, they wanted to make all their different constituent groups happy. So there's all kinds of strings attached to make those groups happy. So I guess what we got to figure out is, like Commissioner Poppins is saying, is there some local groups that would like to apply for that money, but they need to know that if they get those funds, there's a lot of strings attached. Their whole project then has to be under Davis Bacon wages. They can't just hire the local contractor, right?
Well, it's under federal procurement, which includes Davis Bacon.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, those, those particulars are things that they, if they're not aware of, would definitely be made aware of if they're granted those funds.
Yeah.
What I am just trying to give the general public, because I do get inundated with requests or questions as to how or when or why are we going to disperse those, those additional 1.8 or 1.9 million dollars. And again, I would like us to pick projects that if they can have other matching funds to do something with it, it would, you know, whether it's doubling or whatever that percentage is, do even a larger project than what the 1.8 or 1.9 will do. So it was just to give a guidance, you know, are there other things? That's, one of my requests would be is the projects that come to us, hopefully they're going to facilitate a project that they need that additional money to get other money with to do their projects, as well as have build-ready projects that are, are, you know, not theory, you know, not something that they're not anywhere close to, to actually putting shovel in the ground or whatever their project may be, so.
I'm willing to sit down with you, Commissioner, and draw up a form just like Terry did and Sherry did with regard to those RAIF funds, and we create some bullet points as to.
I think the public would like us to maybe make a decision on some of them.
There also is other options available to the county to be able to retain those funds in using hiring new employees, which, you know, in this budget, we do have requests for new employees. Those funds could subsidize those budgets going forward for the new employees, up to, I believe it's 7% above the hiring that they were at pre-COVID. So just, just so you know that those funds don't have to go out, we, there are some options to retain it in the county.
And I, my stance is, the county's perspective, we took a large chunk of it. I would like, there are very, for instance, is one that has some matching fund requirements. I think we can do a lot of good in the public. I, for one, am supporting that we, we try to assist projects outside of our own direct needs at this point on those additional funds.
Well, I'll sit down with you, Commissioner.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We can do that. Any other comment?
I kind of agree with Commissioner Poppins on some of that, the matching grants idea that other entities might have to enlarge their operation.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. The horse is dead. Board discussion in action regarding the 2023 provisional budget. Auditor floated the idea here that we may need to set a special meeting for that when we have all five of our Commissioners here. However.
We need a special meeting or it could just be on our next agenda?
I would, no, I would do it on the 20th due to the fact that we need to have it passed by the 27th, and you guys are taking away the talk.
Yeah, our next meeting. Is our next meeting on the 27th?
The next regular scheduled meeting is the 27th. However, we could do the meeting on the 20th.
Okay.
I'm already in Mitchell. No, no, I'm not.
It's October 3rd.
Maybe we can fly you there.
That's the same day we have scheduled union negotiations.
Yep, we're going to push them back to later in the day.
I am out of town, but I'll see if I can rearrange my schedule.
Okay, what are the wishes of this board today? Does it want to discuss, take action regarding the budget, or does it want to set it for a date and time when the whole board is here?
I propose that we have, take that suggestion and have a special meeting on the 20th.
Again, I'm going to reiterate, I do not know as of yet if I can be here for that one, so.
Yeah, and I'll let you know, I won't be here on the 20th. I've already scheduled.
Okay, well, there's no point in doing it then?
The 20th is out. So.
I want to have all five members here. I don't feel that we should, because this is a pretty critical point, and we do.
We haven't even discussed any of the changes that you want to do the agenda. You know, there was talk about county manager, there's talk about moving Terry out to the highway shop, the scanning that you're proposing for storage, and I have to do an adjustment for taxes. So we need to come up with a date where all five of you can be together because we are running out of time.
Look at your, look at your calendar on the week of the 18th. What day would be an appropriate day for that? I think we should make every allowance that we can to try and get that set so we allow ourselves an ample amount of time to discuss all of these issues. So if you can't make the 20th, can you make the 21st?
Well, let me, I'm going to reach out to Tiffany also, so.
Well, I'll tell you this, Commissioner. In the 20th, I'm testifying in front of the jail consolidation hearing up there in Pierre, and then I'm going to a hearing up in Redfield, the pheasant capital of the world. Then the next two days, I'm in a jury trial, and then I'm in an all-day meeting on Friday the 23rd settlement conference. Okay? So my availability is the afternoon of Monday, the 19th.
I will do my best to see if I can change it.
And so what date are you proposing, Commissioner Poppins?
I don't, that week, I, other than I'm in tea on the 21st that evening, at this point, I'm not sure how my schedule is, being able to be available. Let me ask you this, is there any changes that are being suggested at this point to the budget?
I guess it depends what our discussion comes out. I mean.
We have, I mean, if we don't have any changes that we're looking at doing, we could ratify it today.
Well, it's up to this commission if it wants to. I'll just tell you my point of view, Commissioner Poppins, is for many of the comments that I've made at previous meetings with regard to some of the proposed spending, I'm not going to be supporting it as is. But you kind of, you kind of know where I stand on things already anyway.
My question, do you know what some of those changes are now?
Well, I think Sherry rattled some of them off. Those are some proposed additions. You and I went and met with some department heads, and maybe we can talk about that now. Jake, Jake Oakland suggested that he could move his IT needs to one more year to the right, and we could save a little bit of money that way. I think there was another, that was the one off the top of my head. I haven't heard Jake discuss that any further.
I've talked to him about that one a little bit more.
Okay. You know, I'm not going to support additional services being included into the budget. We're having a tough time paying for the services we already offer, so I'm not going to support any additional hires and things like that. So I know you, I know where you guys stand, and you know where I stand, so.
I guess I'd like to hear those discussions before we formally approve a budget.
Well, I think that's the point, and I think what we're trying to figure out here is what day would we do that where all members could be present or participating?
And at this point, we're not even sure if that'll even happen before the, I just encourage us to, to discuss it. We have it in front of us. We, I know we don't, we're not, have a full board. The decision on the 27th, if we took the action but had the discussion now, and if you did have another day where not all of us could be there to have the further discussion, so it's out in the public, and then if it did get ratified on the 27th with a full board, we may reconvene at that point with everybody. But, you know, from my standpoint, I do support the new hires. Unfortunately, our county is growing. We need to be able to do it. We have the ability to, to balance this budget with current revenues and cash operational funds available. There, I, there's one discussion about how someone's going to handle their, their department, but that isn't a question for the budget itself. That's an operational question later. I, you know, I'm, that's where I'm asking if there are some things, if you don't support new hires, I understand that. If there's something else, Jake's, after visiting with him, he did an amount to maybe a couple thousand dollars, but then put at risk operational issues. I thought that few thousand dollars that we potentially might save could be easily ate up in additional repair costs. I think it's a risk factor that I wouldn't probably support.
At first, and, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think at first, wasn't it like $100,000? Did that drop down to a couple thousand?
It just dropped down. Yeah, it's not $100,000. Yeah, so.
Well, we got information from the sheriff also about concerns about the dispatch center, and, you know, I guess I'd like to hear more information about that.
If you want, I can have the, call the sheriff and ask him to come up, and we can have the discussion now.
Well, okay, so Commissioner Poppins and myself have met with Metro Communications on the possibility of following through with what the state of South Dakota wants, which is to reduce our number of PSAPs. I think there's currently like 33 PSAPs in South Dakota, and they, there's a study out there that shows we could probably do away with most of them, consolidate down to 12. As Governor Janklow said, you could probably consolidate them down to three. Anyway, we've been looking into that. That is not ripe for the budget discussion that we have to pass because we have to provide that PSAP service until we would be in a posture to merge with Metro Communications. And so there's going to be a gap of time between today and whenever that merger may occur, that service has to, and we have to budget for that service. So Commissioner Gibbon, there's no savings to be achieved on that discussion right now because we would, any merger that may happen would not take place until after the budget is determined.
Okay, thank you. But, Madam Auditor, aren't we deficit spending over $5 million? Is that correct? Am I, am I seeing, looking at that correct?
Yes, we have just over $6 million cash applied.
I think one should look at what our auditor has prepared for a budget breakdown, and you get a visual look at what our monies that we earn, and our expenses are usually budgeted high, our revenue is usually budgeted low, and look over the period of years on how we have come out. I think that's kind of a very educational piece. If you have to, I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, okay, this is the biggest thing we do, and apparently we can't find the time to sit and discuss this as a, as a unified body. I'm looking at the 26th. All right, is everybody pretty booked up on the 26th to be able to come in and spend three, four hours on our budget?
We have one Commissioner that's not here, so it's hard for you guys to make a calendar when we're going to end up in the same place if she's not available.
Yes. Well, I'm just looking at that, that's the only alternative right now because Commissioner Aaron's, his calendar is completely full. I mean, I, I mean, I could go over mine. I have, the only time I have really available is the 23rd, but on the 26th is a Monday. Usually Mondays aren't too encumbered, but maybe they are.
Well, I'm available on Monday, the 19th, Commissioner, and I'm also available on the afternoon of Friday, the 23rd.
But we're here today, and I'm willing to chat about what we have. Hopefully, we can get together before. But Commissioner Gibbon, to your point, absolutely, we've been utilizing, but it's not the first time that we've utilized cash to, to balance this budget. We're spending above our revenue.
But the correction on that is we're, a lot of it, we're not dipping into the reserves, if you look, because we overestimate our expenditures and we underestimate our revenue, so.
I was going to get to that, ma'am, but thank you. Thank you for interrupting me. That was wonderful.
Repeat that last thing again, please.
Madam Auditor, would you come up and would you put your budget breakdown on the screen so we talk from facts and numbers rather than just conjecture?
Well, and we did tighten up the process by which revenues and expenditures are calculated, right?
Yep.
So the old, the old process of thinking that we're going to come in high on one and come in on low, we just changed that about a month ago, right?
Yeah, and it, but I mean, I think it's going to take us a little bit, you know, probably two or three years to get it to where we're right in track. You know, right now, I'm doing trending on the revenues, so I'm going back two or three years, but we also have other revenues that we haven't received previously that we're now accounting for. But if you look even here, and, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Commissioner Poppins, if we look in here in '21, our actual revenue was $19 million, and we budgeted 16. And our actual expenditures were 18, and we budgeted 20. So although our budget is a guideline, you know, we, it's not, I don't know how to say it without sounding long.
It's just paper.
It's just numbers. I mean, we, we get more revenues than we, you know, we weren't expecting. We spend less than we were expecting to spend, so.
Yeah, I mean, some people out there in the public may say, well, you had all this money, but technically, we didn't have that money when the budget was developed. That money didn't, that quote unquote revenue didn't materialize until later on in the fiscal year, correct?
Yeah. You mean for like the $10 million?
Well, I'm not talking about the $10 million, but like, for example, when you look at those bar graphs, and it says in 2021, actual $19 million, right? So that's revenue versus actual revenue. So that $19 million didn't exist at the beginning of last year, correct?
Correct.
It materialized throughout the year.
Correct. Yep, so if we looked at, you know, we got grants, we may have sold something, we may have got an insurance claim, we, you know, all those things that are on the next slide that shows the general fund revenues is where our money's coming from.
So for this coming fiscal year that we're talking about here, what is the projected amount of money that you're saying we have?
The total revenue is going to be 20 million, 422, 493.
Okay. And.
And this is just the general fund?
Right, correct. So you're projecting about $20 million in revenue, and as of right now, on the proposed budget, what are the amount of expenditures?
26, 042, 643.
Okay.
So that's your $6 million deficit. But again.
Which includes. Which includes a five percent mandated.
Yep.
Overage.
Yep.
So that five percent of twenty million is how much?
It'd be five million of the 26th, or the?
Well, five percent.
Or five percent of the 26th.
Five percent of.
Okay, you lost me a second. What, what are we, what are you talking about again?
It's like 1.3 million.
Right.
So statutorily, we have to account for five percent of our appropriations as non-collectible taxes.
Okay.
We actually are trying to work through legislator, legislation to get that taken away, so we don't have to account for that, so.
So if you took that six and you subtracted from 1.3, that gives you the 4.7 million.
Yep. So 4.7 is what we're saying.
Let's just wave our magic wand and assume that we're going to, we're obviously, we always do collect more taxes.
Yep.
There's not going to be some taxpayer revolt next year, and people just aren't going to pay.
God, let's hope not.
Correct. So basically, that leaves us still at about 4.7.
Yep.
And we're never 4.7 over, are we?
Hmm, no, not really.
Because I'm trying to get down to brass tacks here and figure out, what is this act? I think the public would like to know, what is this actual amount of overage that we are? Let, let's close the window here, and let's ask ourselves, what is the actual overage?
Well, if you look in '21, because we got actual numbers in '21, we collected nineteen million dollars in revenue, and we spent eighteen million dollars in expenditures. So we did not dip into the reserves.
Right. So if you didn't want to dip in reserves this year, and you wanted to look at last year, we're three million bucks over.
Yep.
So we're spending three million more. So when Commissioner Gibbon says there's some deficit spending here.
On paper.
On paper, granted. We got to find three million bucks.
If you look at our history, we've had consistently the same situation. We've always had consistently, we've always had numbers that have been over our projected revenue. And every year practically, we have always been fairly close. There have been exceptions on that.
And if you just go down that list from 2016 to '21, it's, I think it's only a couple times where we had less revenue come in for the year than we did expenditures.
So now, to get into the weeds, in terms of that, when I look at the right-hand side and I look at general budgeted revenue versus actual, when we look at the actual number, were there any transfers from reserves into the operating fund to create that number?
No.
Okay.
Nope, these are actual, actual revenue and actual expenses, nothing. No.
And then, so how much money do we have in reserve?
Um, if you were to ask me what we're having the checking account today, I would say, let me pull that up right here.
And obviously, we have little to no control over our revenue side. Fellow commissioners, we've maxed out our will tax. Other than doing opt-outs or road and bridge levies, this is our budget, our general two-dollar approximate mill levy that gets placed on the taxpayers, which, again, we've all reiterated to the general public, it's one of the lowest in the state. Our corner parks to the north, to the south, have approximately a 3.5 to four. It's a significant difference, or it would be a significant difference in our budget if we could, you know, increase our budget by seventy-five to a hundred percent of revenue. But that isn't the case. This is what we have. So then we're forced to look at, what are we willing to reduce in operations additionally? We, you know, we're talking, in this budget, we're talking about a few additional hires. We just got our new census for 2020, and it was sixty-five thousand. I haven't heard what the latest projection is, what we have today, but it hasn't stopped growing since then. We are in a, a very rapidly growing percentage-wise community of Lincoln County, and additional services, our crime rates, our docket, obviously, and the criminal matters is going through the roof. And our costs to, to incarcerate in Minnehaha County is, is those rates are that we're getting charged are not going down. I, you know, there are very limited things that we can do to cut, in my mind, without making some drastic measures. And at this point, I'm not, I don't support doing drastic measures. We do have a reserve, and that is why I think we, we stick with this budget. If there was something that needed to be tweaked, absolutely, let's talk about it. But as a whole, I support in, in general practices, how this budget has been presented, so.
Well, I think you're right, Commissioner Poppins, about the fact that we do have one of the lowest mill levies in the state. And just so people understand why that was, it was because of the property tax freeze that occurred under Governor Janklow back in the, what was it, the mid-'90s, right? And at, in the mid-'90s, Lincoln County was not the county it is now. And I'm sure that the benefit of hindsight is great in this instance. The legislature is not, our current legislatures are not in the business of wanting to raise that mill levy. At the same time, though, you know, I do have to provide the counterpoint here from the taxpayer's point of view, is even though the mill levy in Lincoln County is low, the property tax burden is high because of all the different opt-outs passed by the school systems and other governmental entities. So even though the mill levy may be low, and we have no control over that portion of it, the tax burden is very high because of other governmental entities. And when people pay their property taxes to the school and to the city and to the county, they don't sit there and say, well, you know, geez, Lincoln County only takes 12% out of every property tax dollar. That money goes out, and they don't think about the breakdown. And they're not worried about the breakdown to the county. They're worried about the breakdown to their own personal budget.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Go ahead.
I disagree with you on some issues. The reason your taxes are so high is because your, your property values have increased. I'll use as an example, if someone lives in a house in Sioux Falls, and they bought that house 10 years ago, and they paid $200,000 for it, which was a fairly significant price at that time. And with real estate being what it is today, and that same house now is selling for 400 or 450,000 dollars, that's what your assessment has to be used on. So consequently, it isn't necessarily government, or it isn't necessarily that we're spending. It is the market that has changed drastically. It has gone up exponentially. That's where your taxes are based on. So consequently, I don't disagree with you that people are paying a high tax, but a tax that we have no control over. That market out there, that real estate market, is going to be what determines what your basis evaluated on. So if government comes along, and Harrisburg needs to build schools, and the city of Sioux Falls just passed a 3% tax, and, you know, we, as a county, sit down here, and we have to, our, our constituents up in Sioux Falls, yes, their property taxes are going to go up. We had no, we had no control over that. And I figured out that the person that lives in Sioux Falls pays between 12 to 15 cents on their tax dollars, go to the county. Well, the counterbalance is, they don't get any services for that. They don't have to use, get to use the roads, they don't need the police department. The only thing they get to day, pay is taxes. So consequently, yes, they are concerned about that. And, you know, it could be the smallest amount. When you look at our portion, if we were to have an opt-out for whatever we need, our portion of that would be relatively small. But that's not what they see. They see the bottom line on taxes. And unfortunately, counties are given the bad rap because we are the ones that set the assessments. We are the ones that have to do that, and yet we get the smallest portion.
Well, Commissioner Schmidt, I'm just going to add that it's not only because of assessed values increasing. The fact of the matter is that the Harrisburg school system has passed multiple opt-outs. That increases taxes. The T-School District, multiple opt-outs.
We know that.
If, we've got a September 27th bond election in Harrisburg. Folks are probably going to support that, because people do want to see their kids educated, and they are willing to invest in that. So it's not just assessed value in the marketplace. There has been multiple, multiple, multiple bond elections that have occurred, where people do increase their tax burden at the polling place.
Uh, if, or, Mr. Chair, if I may, my comment in on this is, we all aware of, we are aware, a general taxpayer night may not be aware when they're looking and paying their taxes. Absolutely. We're, we all are aware that Lincoln County is the highest taxed, multiple reasons. New homes, new school districts, new, new, new. The one thing that has not been changing is the county. We have a fixed budget. It grows by CPI in growth. The growth has to cover additional services, hopefully. It's done a very good job to the taxpayers of being able to do that at county level. The day is coming, sooner than later, that our needs are going to have to be met outside of that growth for those additional services. We've, you know, our general tax burden to a home for a county services have, has grown by CPI. CPI has been under 2% for 10-plus, or not 10 years, it's been 10 years, five to 10 years. So our budget is, as a whole, only increases by that each year. Whether their valuations changed or not, it get equalized between those, one house to another house. That being said, I do recognize, and I'm very proud, that it isn't a county issue that they have as far as paying too much taxes, yes. But the same token, it is our responsibility to make sure the services for the Register D, the Treasurer, the Auditor, the Sheriff, and the services for highway, that we have the resources that we need to maintain and improve, hopefully improve, you know, those services provided. Again, we still have reserves based on conservative nature of this commission and previous commission that we can balance this budget that, with, you know, a six million dollar on-paper budget expenditure out of cash reserves. I'm proud of that fact that we have reserves. I just, the public does under, need to always be informed that as you're doing that, the day will come when those services, or those reserves may not be there, and there may have to be an adjustment to our mill levies. This is excluding major expansions if we do build a courthouse, if this is, if we do build a jail. But operational costs of the day-to-day business of the Register D, Treasurer, et cetera, of, of the departments of the county, they haven't grown outside of, of CPI. And I'm proud of that, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, did you get a answer on what we have in the county reserves?
Today, we have eleven million, seven hundred ninety-four dollars, eleven million, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars in our cash account for the general fund. That doesn't include the ARCA funds or anything else. Those haven't been applied to the general fund cash yet.
I'd like to remind the commission, though, too, two weeks ago, we had a water drainage board. And the frustration of those here that we aren't addressing some of their needs, whether or not we have money, or whether we're just not choosing to do drainage issues, you know, those are, those are things that need to be addressed as this county grows. And, you know, I talked to some people since then, and they said, yeah, I knew, I knew that you had that on the agenda. It's a waste of time. It doesn't do any good. Uh, I, I, you know, we're going to have some expenses that aren't in this budget that need to be addressed as well. And I realize we have money in reserves, but eventually, they will go away for years to come that other commissions will have to deal with. And anything we can tighten our budget to help delay that, I think it's important that we start doing somewhat now, as little as it might be or trivial.
I, I totally concur, and unfortunately, at this point, I don't have anything where I see that we can tighten any significance. There may be, again, a few dollars here and there, but that, I unfortunately start looking at that as a micromanaging some of these departments. We typically have always at the last day looked at the highway budget, because it's the only one where we have any large funds that are, I'm going to use the word discretionary, but I'm tired of using discretionary, because who's driven on any of our roads lately and said, wow, I'm very proud of all, all of our roads, bridges? I cannot support reducing their budget any further. It's only going to cost us more in the end, as we've seen, as the costs have increased dramatically just in the last year.
To your point, Commissioner Poppins, we got an eight million dollar project down in Hudson that we have to try to work with. Commissioner Gibbon, you know, the frustration that the public has is only matched by the frustration that we've had. We've never had any really, the drainage situation. And do we know what we need to do? Yes. Have we had the resources to do that? No. We've allocated and maintained our budget as conservative as we can, so we haven't had any extra funds to do that. And I think Terry does an outstanding job trying to clean ditches and try to, and it may be Band-Aid, and it may be all kinds of things. But it only goes to prove that this county has always taken a very conservative approach, and does it maybe frustratingly to the public. But at the same time, we've been very cautious with the dollars that we've had. As Commissioner Poppins has said, we've never had an opt-out. And if you look across the state, and you look at the number of, of counties that have had opt-outs, especially Minnehaha County, I think they've had four or five, and you go down the line, we haven't. And, and yet, we're the fastest-growing county in the state. I mean, when you start throwing the numbers out of where we are, and I think we've had a projection that in 2030, we're going to kick 100,000 population. I mean, that's, that's a very significant thing, and the services that they're going to require are going to eclipse what we have in front of us today.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And I would note, I, I mean, I, I think you do bring up a good point. Lincoln County has not opted out a lot. But I will remember you that you, during my tenure on this board, you have wanted to opt-out. You just weren't able to get the votes to do it.
That, that's correct. And in hindsight, that would have been a very wise decision for the public to make. We wouldn't be in the condition we are today without a jail and without adequate courtrooms.
And just for the record, those opt-out decisions or votes were to try to do some of the things that Commissioner Gibbon has referred to that need to get addressed, but are not able to be done with our current operating budget.
We'd have had to opt-out for roads and bridges. We wouldn't be in the condition we are today either.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Is there, even though we ix- nixed points 11 through 14 for executive session, I'll get to you right away, John. Is there a need for an executive session with the board in front of us today?
No.
Okay.
I had talked to Bill about an executive session issue. Did he relay that to you, Joe, or not?
Um, I believe the items that are on the agenda were contemplated by Mr. Golden to be spoken by himself, if you are able to wait for that.
We didn't have the two expenditures that we need to address, Mr. Chairman, yet.
We're going to get to those.
Okay.
Commissioner Gibbon, I think what he's saying is, I know you want to do an executive session to talk about that issue, but Bill is not here to talk about it.
Okay.
So it won't, it would be fruitless. Is that okay with you then?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, given we don't have a meeting until the 27th, Joe, are you at all comfortable to discuss issues that we had, just recently had a meeting about, an executive session?
Yes.
On that, I am requesting an executive session for contractual matters to inform those board members present on what, what we're going on.
I'm going to hold your motion in abeyance once.
All right.
Point taken. Mr. Rambo.
Good morning, gentlemen. So what I'm here to talk about is, at the highway shop, the HVAC systems and the ERV is controlled by a, a system of controls that's right now been controlled by Star Controls. And we have not, quite honestly, had really good success with using them. So for most of the summer, Terry Floyd and I and Jared Narum have been talking about the idea of possibly switching over to a new system to basically integrate with what we have going on here. we have going on here at the courthouse. Well, we, in the interim, I was working with GNR, who does that, to throw together a proposal to do that, and the, basically, the brainboard of the STAR system crashed a week or so ago. Well, we discovered it, it had failed. And much part of our problem that we've had with STAR was, there was, it was just by pure accident that we found this out. Basically, the mornings got cold, the system kicked on, the in-floor heat kicked on, we really didn't need the in-floor heat on yet, but it was running and it wouldn't shut it back off. So because of this, we got with STAR's, and it, they, they determined that their, their brainboard, or whatever, I'm gonna use the term, was done for, and it was gonna be about $7,800 expense to repair it. Well, in the process, I got with GNR and I said, "You know what, you guys need to get the proposal because I'm not gonna spend this $7,800 just to, to not use it in the future." So, GNR came forward and they, they have a proposal to do their own board for $9,465. So basically, it's an additional $2,000 over, or not 2,000, it's not even that, over what STAR would do, but we would be able to integrate to a much better system, in my opinion. So that's what I would like to do. We have to get one of these in motion because obviously, parts could take some time to get in, and we are gonna hit a cold season here sooner or later. So that's why I would like to have this decision made today, so I can move forward and get these parts on order from GNR controls.
I think it's a buildings and maintenance issue, and when your buildings and HVAC systems start to fail, that does constitute an emergency where we could take that issue up. So those are the kind of things that gotta get fixed pretty quick. So is there a motion to support Mr. Rambo's proposal?
I would so move.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion hearing, unclerk called.
I have one, one thing real quick, I, it might require an agreement to make that purchase, so I just would like to have it included in your motion that...
I would add that to have the authorized, the chair to, or acting chair to sign that.
I'll use that in my second.
Any discussion?
Approximately how much?
Sean.
Oh, sorry.
Approximately, how much are we talking about?
The total expense would be $9,465, whereas just to fix the system, to put what already had been in there, it was $7,887.
Thank you.
Sean, you had a question?
That was my question.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, clerk will call the rule.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rambo. Okay, there's a motion pending for, or excuse me, there's a motion, I'll entertain a motion now.
Did you wanna do?
No, I need the executive session. Thank you.
Okay, but Joe had, Joe has an item on the agenda also that you added, so...
What was that?
Oh, hold on. We do have this issue with Mr. Mater wanting to pay, get legacy aviation paid, my apologies.
I need the executive session before that.
To discuss that. Okay, we put two and two together now, got it. So, before this commission votes on that agenda item, we're gonna go into executive session. Can I go to motion?
I will offer that again.
And a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, got motion second, any discussion, hearing none, clerk will call the rule.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes, thank you.